Good evening, everyone, all of us. Welcome to the City of Placerville Planning Commission meeting, Tuesday, March 17th, 2020. I will call the meeting to order. Please join me in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance.
Chair Keeney.
Present.
Member Friend.
Aye.
Member Lupper.
Present.
Noted member List and member Rains are absent.
We do have a quorum, so we can conduct business. Moving on to the consent calendar, all matters listed under the consent calendar are considered routine, will be enacted by general consent unless any commissioner requests a roll call, vote, or unless any member of the commission, staff, or audience wishes to remove an item for a discussion. Do any commissioners want to pull anything from our consent calendar?
Would the chair entertain a motion to adopt?
Oh, okay. No one from the public wants to pull anything, nothing from staff. Okay, we have a motion to adopt.
Second.
Motion is second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, thank you very much. I wanted to make a note, I'm sorry we've already approved it, but part of the agenda is approving the housing element progress report. Just wanted to make a quick comment. Thank you very much for summarizing all that, it's very well laid out, appreciate that. And that's just a formality off, that goes to the city council.
Yes.
Okay. Item six is items of interest to the public.
Chair, I had one question on the report that I saw, and I was just curious if it was my eyes seeing it. On the program listing, number 20 and 21, it says CB, CDBG funding to assist with the conduction of the survey not obtained, city to investigate funding available during 2019. Should it say 2020?
It should, thank you.
Okay, cool. Those are the only two things that I saw.
Sharp eye.
Sometimes you get it and sometimes you don't.
And if I could ask a question, Madam Chair, just, sorry.
Sure.
Is there a rush on this housing element to get it to council? A state imposed deadline?
State statute requires local government, cities and counties throughout the state to file such a report with HCD by April 1st.
And this is March, so you probably have to get it to council.
Next weekend, next week, yes.
Got you. Okay, all right, thank you. One other thing, I heard the governor was thinking about cutting in half the amount of time that cities had to comply with their housing requirements. Do you know anything about that? Could have swore I saw that during this week.
Without having you define housing requirements, I don't, I don't know if I can answer the question.
Your goal, I think the goals in your housing elements, I could have swore I saw he was going to, he was going to cut in half the amount of time the cities had to comply with their element goals.
I am not aware.
Okay, you might want to research that.
I would just comment that the City of Placerville does have a certified housing element, and we are fully in compliance with state statutes.
And that was making no implication to the contrary, just.
Yeah, it was really easy to read and digest. Were all of the ones that came through all kind of personal builds then, like building their own house or building an ADU that wasn't necessarily, like we?
Kind of all over.
Was.
Some, yeah, the ADUs typically were for family members.
That's what I wondered.
I think in general. Yes, there were some speculative, single-family homes that are in the pipeline or have finished.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, so it's kind of, it's kind of all over.
Cool. Excellent.
Okay, we'll move on to number six, items of interest to the public. This portion of the meeting is reserved for persons wishing to address the commission on any matter not on our agenda, that is within the subject matter jurisdiction of the planning commission. Is that why you're here tonight?
Actually, I was here for the housing report. I thought I'd get a jump on it so I could talk about the city council. Do I get a copy of the report, should I wait for it to go in the packet?
Yeah, I don't have a copy.
Would you step up to the podium, please, so we can get this on record?
We could certainly provide one to you, I don't have one currently to give you one tonight.
It will be in my packet for next week.
For council, yes, it will be in the packet, yes.
I actually wanted to see if there's an actual meeting with all the virus scare.
Yeah, we checked in today and social distanced, so we're doing our best. Yeah.
All right, thank you.
Good luck, have a nice evening.
Okay, we'll move on to number seven, public hearing. 3148 Sacramento Street, site plan review 20-01, historic district review. This is continued from February 18th, 2020. Consideration of the application that was received from property owner Lori Velker. And I'll turn it over to you, Mr. Painter, for an update, if you have one, to your staff report. I see we have a letter before us.
I do.
Maybe you can explain the importance of that.
Staff received, email was sent, I duplicated it here for your review. It came in on Friday after the packets had been made available to you all, as well as the public. I don't know if you've had a chance to look at it, but in essence, she is requesting additional time to come back to you with the items and issues and responses to the concerns and issues that you had back in February. She is not present today, I don't know if she intended to come. I strongly encouraged her to come to provide perhaps some additional information or answer any questions you may have about her need for a continuance or an extension of time.
And I had a question, so her request to continue this, and I'm not sure here, deadline for submit, so where does this put us as far as the streamline, permit streamlining act? Can we leave this open, can we just continue it again?
Fair question. In my opinion, I think you as a commission have not deemed this application complete.
Correct.
You need additional information in order for you to render a decision. So, I don't think the permit streamlining act would apply to this until such time as you deem that you have enough information to make a decision on the project. That leads probably your next question as to what date or dates do we look at in which to hear it? Well, that is kind of open-ended, not knowing whether we all will be here at the next meeting or not. So, I know Member Friend and I have kind of communicated back and forth by email, and I kind of gave him a possible scenario that perhaps we just table this item, provide no date.
Okay.
And require the, if the applicant really wants to do this, she would come back with a response, and we would have to renotice at such time.
Mm-hmm, renotice.
Yeah.
But she would not have to pay all of, she wouldn't have to reapply?
No, I don't, no.
Pay more fees, it would just be in, held in stasis? Okay, and I can see you have a question.
And these are, these are interesting and difficult times for the applicant or the public and even for us. I'm quite comfortable, I mean, she gives an explanation as to why, but I think even beyond that, I, and I would do this for anyone, I would be quite comfortable under the circumstances of tabling this item. We don't even know frankly what we're going, government process, we're not sure what that's going to be, so if the chair has no objection, I would move to table.
Okay, so we have a motion to table the item.
I'm happy to second, as long as that's enough information to be good to go, just tabling in general, there's no?
If you second, then we can discuss.
Second.
Yes, we have a motion and a second to table this. Okay, let's discuss the item.
Yeah.
And then my, my understanding is it simply requires a motion at some point to remove from table.
Correct.
To bring it back. And when we do that, the applicant could have in the meantime, before we do that, provide the information that's needed, right?
Yes.
So, we don't have to move it from table and then review it without the applicant having done anything. So, she actually has an opportunity, and I'm not saying that she's, she's doing that, and it sounds like she's got other issues. I think we simply need to communicate, staff can do this, administratively simply communicate, have some communication to her, let her know that we've moved it to table, all the other circumstances being part of that, and then see if you can get from her some sense as to when she'll be able to do what she's got to do. And it may be difficult just trying to conduct business in general now, right? So, I'm happy, and I would personally prefer not to discuss the merits of the project, I would prefer just have it go to table, and then it's a simple matter of bringing it back.
There's also, if you read, you've read her statement, the second sentence causes pause to me because I have an elderly parent myself, and so I could certainly understand what she's going through.
Right.
Need additional time, so.
Yeah.
I think the way it might work would be if you were to table it, we would on the next, on the next agenda, which we, we are all able to come here, that we would have a segment on the agenda with the motion to remove it from the table. If, if approved by a majority, then it could go to the next item, which is to actually bring the item off the table to be heard.
And if she's not ready?
If she's ready at that, when she's ready at that time.
When she's ready.
That agenda will read, remove, okay.
It's her impetus, she wants this work done, or work that would be approved by you. So, it's still her interest to do the work, or work that gets approved by the commission. I don't want to give any, any concession as to what has been approved and what hasn't, because nothing's been approved at this moment, but I think you understand what I'm trying to say.
Right. My concern is that by not taking a definitive action to approve or disapprove, then that somehow gives the applicant, you know, the leeway to do whatever they please. But if we table it, and then when she's ready to bring forth that information, then we can consider all of the merits.
That's an excellent synopsis, thank you.
Perfect.
Appreciate you clarifying that for us, all right.
Will the electrical work that came out in the, looking at her house and everything, still have to go forward outside of this process? That building?
Yeah, you brought up, you brought up that. Our building official wanted to stress to her the importance of having that work done immediately. That work has not been done, but that is, that's entirely up to her.
But that is outside of this?
It's outside the scope of, scope of your review. Again, it's more of a reminder to the property owner that, hey, we're aware of these substandard electrical panels?
Yeah.
That have had problems in the past, and?
Full, full understanding, I had to replace it at my house, so I understand that.
No, it's a good point.
It's really important, yeah.
Now, your role would not be to, to have any oversight of that particular issue.
Right, right, but, but it's happening outside of it, it's all, it's not wrapped into this.
Correct.
Perfect.
The worries just pile up. I mean, it's just one thing. So, I call the question.
I just wanted to make a couple of comments to my fellow commissioners. I, this project, I really was pulled in two directions, and I feel like it really warranted me going back and looking through our guidelines and the requirements and given, and I think she understands our concern about protecting this historical district and what she proposed, and it was in your staff report quite clearly that what she was proposing did not fall within the guidelines of our historic district rehabilitation guidelines, and I, I think she heard us loud and clear, so hopefully her next proposal will fall in, more in keeping with what we intend for the historic district and what we as a commission have to do. You know, I was hearing, and I actually, outside of historic district constraints, you know, what she was proposing was not ugly.
Yeah.
Was not even, you know, in a different area, might even fit in. However, I went back through her application and, you know, things like the, the board in Baton versus the lap siding. If she was surrounded by, you know, or if she even had a couple of houses in her area that had that style, and so she just wanted to adopt that, making her, you know, historic, well, older home look like that, I could be a little more sympathetic and, well, actually, I think we were very sympathetic to her plight, but my point is that we need to help homeowners, property owners rehab their deteriorating structures, so they, you know, are efficient, they're comfortable, but we really, we can't afford to lose much more of the look that we've tried to preserve, and it's really not our purview to change. If we want to change what's in our historic district, that needs to take place outside of the planning commission. Planning commission, we all took an oath to uphold these guidelines, and I felt like we maybe started to move away from that, although she, I think she was hearing and appreciated the importance of preserving that historic look to her structure. So, I just wanted to take a moment to bring everybody back in to that perspective, and so when this comes back before us, maybe even, you know, sit down with our guidelines, the hard copy, and make sure that, or this project or another project, make sure that we really are adhering to those standards that the city, the city as a whole wants us to enforce. So, we have, you know, a lot of leeway in aesthetics, but this is also a very important issue to our community, so it's our responsibility to make sure that we, make sure that everyone's concerns are addressed and standards are upheld.
Yeah.
I just recall it being a difficult and uncomfortable project for my planning commissioner, so hopefully.
And I think, I think from my side, it was more that I couldn't envision, I think we were both, I couldn't envision her house with the picture that we were given, and so I really think it had more to do with, with actually understanding the ultimate outcome versus being like, heck no, you can't have that ever, no way, like, you know, I think there's a lot of leeway there, and in her letter, she said, unless you think there's a chance, I really do think there is a happy medium, as you just expressed, that we can come to.
That's what I'm hoping.
I would really hope that she comes back and doesn't think that us kind of going into some detail about it is so overwhelming that it's like, forget it, because I don't think it's that much harder or more work to get to a really comfortable place.
From my perspective, if we deviate very far from, and I do recommend you, we've all been given a copy of these guidelines, right? Go, go through, actually, just go through the table of contents, there's a couple of pages I think are particularly relevant, I'm not going to belabor, take time to read them now, but, you know, it's, once you read that and I think you put it in perspective, you see how, you know, yes, it is a constraint, but I don't think it's an undue burden, and when people buy property, it is their responsibility to look at, you look at title, you look at easements, that's just part of, you know, purchasing property, and knowing that you're in a historic district, you have to, you have to abide by that. If that's not something that you can, it's just like in a different community when you have CCNRs, you need to read those. If that's not something you can live with, then you should not be buying that piece of property.
I don't believe any of that information is associated with title. I don't believe any of that information is provided to the buyers.
That's what she stated, yeah.
And it's easy, it is very easy for us to say and wave guidelines, and trying to be respectful, to wave guidelines, but these are real costs. If it's really that valuable to the city, the city should have a fund to assist homeowners, because at the end of the day, well, you know, we're preserving and supposedly we're getting the value, oh yeah, the homeowner's getting this value. I, I'm, I don't feel constrained or tied, that my hands are tied as a planning commissioner, that, well, sorry, this is just how it is, neither meet it or you don't. I think each case has to be evaluated individually, and in her particular case, it seemed to me, I don't recall this, I just remember an intense feeling of discomfort and how difficult it was going to look to process that. But in general, my principle would be, there is a burden threshold. I don't know what that is, it's arbitrary, but the historic district in some ways is arbitrary, right?
Well, no, I disagree, I don't think it's arbitrary, and it is defined.
It's thought out, well, it may be defined and delineated, but this has come up so many times over the years I've been a planning commissioner, and, and I don't think the buyers do know. I don't think, I'm not saying the city doesn't do a good job of promoting, but there's, there certainly is no relationship between the real estate transaction and the city and an informational anything. Follow what I'm saying?
Yes, I do.
Yeah, and?
And I don't, I don't know that we can answer that question here and now.
Well, no.
Perhaps we do need to do some investigation, but as I said, when Ms. Volker was here, that, you know, we, you need to do your due diligence, you need to inform yourself, and I think especially if you are buying, and she's, you know, not naive about this at all, she's an experienced realtor. When you're buying a house that you know is old, you know, you're buying into a community that does want to protect its historic resources, you know, whether that shows up on your title report or not, I think it's, it's worth, it's something she needed, needs to, needs to appreciate, you know, she didn't at the moment that she made the transaction. And I think that there is plenty of leeway, latitude to make it, you know, we don't want to unduly burden her financially, but we are trying to protect a certain element, historic element in our community, and that is, you know, that, that is our job. And, you know, how you feel about that is, is one thing, if you don't think that the city's doing a good job promoting this, informing people, again, that is an issue that needs to be taken away from the planning commission, because we're to treat everyone fairly, and so if they come and, you know, their property was within those, that boundary of historic district, then we, we're bound to apply the same standards to each and every one of those homes. If, if we want to make an exception, however, I mean, we can make findings that go against these guidelines, but those findings would have to stand up to another challenge, another legal challenge from one of our historic groups that, you know, wants to preserve as much as they can. So, those, those are things, not to say that it can, absolutely cannot be done, but in, in doing that, we will have to write very strong, like I said, legally support, able to support in court findings to uphold our decision.
Anybody can sue over anything.
Well, that's true.
Anybody can sue over anything, and, and people suing to dictate to somebody else what they do or don't do with their property is, is something that is, I'll use the word annoying, but that's not the word I'm thinking of. In any event, it will give me great satisfaction and great pleasure if, if this commission is able to resolve this with, with a sense of satisfaction and equity, meaning that the city isn't losing and, and the property owner isn't losing or being overly burdened. And so, I, I want you to please, I encourage you to please bring your, your passion on this to the next meeting, or whenever the item comes back, I will clearly do my due diligence and be prepared to support.
That's all I can ask.
Whatever position I think, you know, I might come from. I certainly care about the historic character, clearly do, okay? But I also think that there, because it's not funded, right? That there has to be some sort of a limit threshold.
Well, you know, again, that having the, having funding outside of, you know, our jurisdiction, that this, it sounds like an excellent idea, I think that might be able to, you know, get us over some of the, some of the problems, the conflicts that we do have, however, that doesn't exist today, and it's certainly not something that the planning commission can start up or, you know, recommend, that really is beyond the scope of our, our duty. And so, I, I just, as you said, you want me to come back to this item with passion, and, and I think, passion and compassion, both, you know, we look at these pictures that she submitted, you know, the windows especially are in terrible shape, but she also is informed now, and she needs to make a good faith effort to try to, and she, in fact, she made a couple pages of this guideline, part of her submittal package, so she's aware of what needs to be done, and hopefully she can make a much better presentation to us in the future, something that we can all agree on, something that works for her and works for our community.
Staff might encourage the applicant, when, I'm sure you're going to reach out to her, to maybe pull a review of this, of this session, that might, that might also be helpful.
Yeah, Madam Chair, if staff could just give a very, very brief comment, there was a statement made as far as a property owner's, when they purchase a property, are they then noticed of the zoning of the property? Staff would just comment that the property is zoned, and maybe Mr. Painter can correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe it's zoned, R16, 6,000, so it's a single-family residential zone, which the historic district zoning overlay, so it's zoned as being in a historic district. So, I would find it very unlikely that a purchaser of a piece of property does not know the zoning, which is the legal regulatory instrument that governs the uses on that property, would not know that.
But if I bought?
Very unlikely.
If I may, so if I, if I bought a piece of property in the historic district, aside from, okay, that's my zoning, I wouldn't know that there's any restrictions or any requirements or benefit, I mean, I just, there's my zoning, I mean, I just wouldn't know, right? I mean, so, we don't, as a governor, and again, I'm not being critical, I'm just saying there's a dis, perhaps a disconnect.
Yeah, staff would respectfully disagree with that, because zoning, of course, it's an ordinance, it regulates the use of that property, regulates what, what happens on that property, and so that's more than constructive notice, and I think, as I think was stated earlier, there is a due diligence then on the property owner to then seek out, well, what does this zoning mean? Somebody just doesn't blindly purchase a piece of property not knowing whether it's residential, it's an historic district, what does that mean? I think then the owner would actually have the, the due diligences on the buyer beware to look it up and see, well, what can I do, or what are the constraints or regulations on a particular piece of property?
I can remember in this meeting, using that exact same argument, caveat emptor, because I was a realtor years ago, caveat emptor, buyer beware, and I was told very specifically from that diass, though, that principle does, no longer applies, the burden doesn't exist that way. I'm not challenging staff of the city, I'm saying something like this, I would think it should show up in title then, there should be some kind of notice in the title report, beyond simply, well, here's your zoning. I, I don't think that the average, and for us, of course, we're involved with this stuff, this means things to us. I think for the average individual, even perhaps the average real estate agent, maybe this is, maybe this is an educational piece with, with Realtor Association, that might be the connection, that might be where we go, you know? We need people to know when they purchase property, and you're, you're an instrument of that, right? So, maybe it's a public or industry education piece, but I, I don't think that the average individual buying a piece of property and they see the zone, oh, it's zoned, R1, okay, great, R1 zoning, single-family residential, historic district, I don't know that that necessarily triggers anything.
Well, I see a couple of problems with that argument. Well, first off, we are to apply these guidelines fairly across all applicants that come before us, and in this particular instance, Volker is a realtor, I think her husband, partner, anyway, I think they both are, and as far as an educational opportunity, this, I think most of the actions that we take, well, at least they are an opportunity to educate the public, and perhaps in this one, this case in particular, this is a realtor who, if she did not know what the, you know, guidelines are, that they're, you know, that zoned, being zoned of historic district or, you know, she, she needs to learn to research that, she's actually, you know, it's a burden on her, she, she needs to inform other clients, you know, when you buy, another client, not just herself. So, this is an educational opportunity.
I say the burden's on the city, this is a value to the city, perhaps the burden is on the city to be promotional.
Well, I think the city has done its job by zoning, that is, that is law, that, that actually does show up on any, I think any description of a piece of property, it says what the zoning is, and if you aren't purchasing, if you aren't inquisitive enough to, you know, wonder what that is, well, you know, that is, you know, maybe it will never come up again as, as long as that person holds that property. But I don't know that we can make an exception for someone who didn't do their research to, you know, or wasn't even, you know, thinking, they just wanted to make a quick sale.
I know, she said she bought the house in foreclosure during the financial, when the banks were selling.
So, this is, you know, her?
Which I do understand, because I did too, and at that time, it was a very mucky process and weird, and there was a lot of things going on, so I, I do have sympathy for, maybe normally realtors do tell them, but in that time, when she bought that house, she may not have known. not have known. So it's kind of a hard thing to know, too, when people are being informed versus not in different periods of time, if that makes sense.
Still, yeah, I, you know, I do appreciate that, too, that, you know, sales have to be made, there are time constraints. But getting back to the responsibility of the planning commission, we have to apply these guidelines across all the properties in the historic district, we need to be fair to not just this applicant, but to the surrounding property owners to keep this historic look of our area. And, you know, ignorance of a specific guidelines when you're making the purchase, you know, that, well, that may be one case, but I think that.
I do tend to agree with you. It's important that we keep consistency, but I can also agree that there is a really hard, it's really hard to do that, and it's a very fine line to walk of being, you know, acknowledging that, that people are living, paying, doing all the stuff to do with it, but then also, I agree, once it goes away, it's, you can't really get it back. So it's kind of, it's, as we all know, that's why we're having this discussion, right? It's a hard line to walk.
And, you know, years, we had a rush of real estate transactions, you know, these come and go, but the fact that we are, we have a lot of history in Placerville, you know, site-specific, to Placerville, you know, there's zoning across different cities and different places in California, but in Placerville, that's very important to us, and has been for quite some time. This historic district's been in place for a number of years, and, you know, we were designated Old Hangtown quite some time ago, so just the fact that someone's buying into Placerville, if they're not aware that, you know, history is a big part of our identity, I am not very, I can't be very sympathetic to that purchaser. You know, we can educate them and work with them and try to, you know, you know, reach a satisfactory conclusion, but you have to appreciate, you know, where we are. This is, you know, a historic area.
That house, that house that we approved, the demolition of, that became, I think, you know, the subject of a lawsuit, and I don't even know where that is at this point, but it was in a historic district, if I'm not mistaken.
That's right.
There was nothing about that structure that said anything except 1950 dumped to me, pardon my language. There was nothing about that structure.
And I agree.
So we have, so we have this, again, well-intentioned, well-defined, yet still arbitrary at some level, boundary or overlay, okay? So that's fine. I mean, I'm looking at this as an unfunded mandate.
Well, I look at this.
County governments don't like unfunded mandates.
I also wonder if people just stop asking to fix things, and it falls apart and turns into that house, then what does it even matter if we have all these historical?
That's a great point.
That's my concern, where I see this slippery slope going, like, I don't want it to seem so hard or so strict that you can't do anything, and then you go, screw it, and let the siding fall off, and now we have another demolition in a really, you know, significant location, too, and just, there's a lot of things.
We really are balancing.
That I think is very dangerous of a slope.
We are balancing a lot of goals with this, we, part of, one of our goals is to, you know, keep our housing stock in good condition. And again, I, you know, really recommend that you pick through the guidelines, there are steps for when something has to be demolished, and, you know, the case that did come before us over there on Cedar Ravine, that's what happens when a property, when a house is not taken care of, it can, and the house on Sacramento Street, if it's not taken care of, it could reach that state as well. And then we have a different, completely different decision in front of us. You've got something that is not.
We could have Board and Batten, now we have a demolition and a less house, and who knows what's going to happen.
Exactly.
I mean, not that I'm saying, you know, we have to go, but just in general, weighing those, I think.
And I think it's important for us to, to work with the applicants, too, to find something that supports the guidelines, respects the historic district that's defined, but that, you know, the homeowner, the property owner, is comfortable with. We, you know, we don't want to impose, they aren't defined CCNRs, you, you know, you can't paint it that color of yellow, you have to come from, you know, it's not that kind of thing. There is a lot of, a lot of leeway, and I think we gave her, with her first application, some ideas on how she can maintain the look of, not change the look of her property, but improve it and make it a much better home to live in.
All right.
There's no way I'm getting tested for the virus, because if I come back positive, they'll quarantine me, so.
A girl just ran out of, yeah, wow.
I ain't getting tested.
Well, I guess at that, we're, we're ready to go ahead and.
We have a motion to table, I think.
We have a motion to table in a second and a discussion. Let's go ahead and call the, the vote on this, Mr. Painter?
Member Lepper.
Aye.
Vice Chair Kine.
Aye.
Member Friend.
Yes.
Okay, well, thank you for, I appreciate that discussion with both of you, and as we said, it's a, it's a chance to educate ourselves and the public on these matters. Number eight is new business, which would be election of officers for chair and vice chair. That requires that we have all five members of our commission present, and so they are not here, so we will have to postpone that to.
Whenever.
Whenever.
Yes.
So we don't have to, do we have to give you direction, Mr. Painter, or do you just keep putting that on?
No, I'll put it on because the bylaws state that it needs to come back until such time as, well, not verbatim of what I'm about to say, but the first meeting after March 1st is when the election needs to occur, so that date, March 1st date, is long past us, so I will continue to bring it up until such time as we have five members.
Okay, thank you very much. And I certainly do enjoy being the chair of this commission, it's been, it's just so much, so exciting.
You've done a great job.
You're, you're too kind.
Can't believe it's been a year.
Number nine is matters from commissioners and staff. This is where the commission, commission brings, you know, members bring matters to the attention of staff. Anyone have something that we haven't already talked about?
Well, I can report.
Staff, anything for us?
I can report that we do not have agenda items for the first meeting in April anyway, so I didn't, without the applicant here for, for item seven, it would have been difficult for us to even assign a date without her presence. I don't, I don't think that's something that commission should do, so, you know, I think the tabling, again, makes sense to me. So therefore, forgot where I was going with that.
You are, if I may, you are going to communicate to the applicant what we did.
Yes, yes, she'll get a letter in writing.
And then encourage her, and encourage her to be proactive with this process in terms of letting staff know, to let us know what she's doing, okay, so we know that it's, it's not languishing.
Yep.
Okay, so that would, at this, at this point, we're looking at the 21st of April, possibly, if.
That would be the next logical one, yeah.
So there's nothing pending. I did have a question for staff about, I look at Google News, I'll admit it, and something came up from the Sacramento Business Journal, and I'm not going to pay, because I'm just inherently cheap, but it was about housing in Placerville, and something about 150 units of low-income housing, is there anything that you can shed light on about that?
Sure, excuse me, yes, I can talk briefly about that. We have two sites that, that were purchased by a developer, the one site is located at Middletown and Cold Springs Road, you've probably seen the clearing of vegetation on that site. We are looking at a, I believe it's an 82-unit apartment complex, it'll be an affordable housing complex. The city is trying to facilitate applications for both a community development block grant funds that would pay for property acquisition, and then an IIG, which is infill infrastructure grant, that would pay for the off-site improvements. And the off-site improvements for that site, this, that being the Middletown, Cold Springs site, is about $2.2 million in off-site improvement, so that grant would go a long way to facilitating the construction of affordable housing. And then the other site is located within the ridge at Orchard Hill, that property, that plant development is about maybe a quarter developed right now, it's off of Mallard, between, say, the Boys and Girls Club, when you're heading up towards the wastewater treatment plant, you can see the single-family homes up there off of Wine Sap and McIntosh. So just, there's that lower pad, that property's all been purchased by the same developer of the other property, and they're planning, I think it's a 72-unit affordable housing project, and hopefully we'll get grant fundings, both community development block grant funds to help fund the property acquisition for that, and also the infill infrastructure grant through the housing and community development, then to pay for the off-site improvements that would be associated for development of that property. And I believe the estimated cost of off-site is about $1.2 million. So that's about where we're at, we're working with a person that was formerly the deputy director of HCD, who is now acting as a consultant to help both the city and the developer pursue those grants. So that's currently where we're at, and we'll keep you informed.
Yes, Mr. Painter, you have something?
The only thing I'd add to that is, I don't believe you mentioned it, is these two sites that he described were part of the housing opportunity overlay provisions. So this developer and the city will be utilizing those, those procedures, policies and, and implementation to develop that, that low-income housing.
And those block grants, then, does the city administer the, the grant to the developer? Is that how that works? Excuse my ignorance.
The community development block grant will be a, it'll be a grant to the city, and then city would then in turn loan that money to the developer, so it would be in, it would be an interest-only loan for a period of 55 years. So for 55 years, we would have an affordable housing project. It would probably remain affordable indefinitely, there'd probably be renegotiations later on, long after I've left the city.
Well, I'm not so sure about that.
And then the other.
I'm not so sure about that.
I don't know if I'd live another 55 years. The infill infrastructure grant, that would be basically a, a grant then, that would, that would fund those off-site improvements.
Excellent.
And then one other last comment, then, if there's no other questions on that project, I just want to point out that when the commission took action on the demolition at 3095 Cedar Ravine, your action was appeal to the city council, there was no, no lawsuit filed on that.
Okay. And you haven't heard anything from the property owner, as we discussed at the time, you know, something needs to be done with that property, but you haven't had any communications.
Yeah, when the item went to city council, the, the, the property owner then withdrew his demolition permit, and it mooted out the appeal. And so he is currently weighing the options of either rehabbing that house or looking, maybe doing a demolition, we don't really know, we're waiting to see what he comes up with. It's going to be a very difficult structure to rehab because of its poor condition.
Mm-hmm.
So we'll, we'll wait and see. If, if the applicant were, again, to pursue, to demo the building, it would again come back before you for action.
Okay. Anything else? All right, that seems to be all of our business to take care of. It's 6:44, and I adjourned the meeting to, well, till April, or till when we have business on the agenda. Thank you very much, everyone.